Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, October 21st. At 6:30 PM, we are going to enter right into executive session and will return at 7:00 PM for our regular agenda items for our meeting. John, can I have a motion to enter executive session, please?
Yeah, I move that at 6:30 PM. The Board of Selectmen move into executive session to meet with Chief O'Leary and the subject is to discuss strategies, legal concerns on sexual abuse case. And will return to public session at the end of executive session.
Can I have a second, please?
A second.
A second by David. All those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome back to the Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, October 21st. I'll read our agenda. 7:00 PM, we have the Child Sexual Abuse Awareness Committee providing us with a report of the Child Sexual Abuse Committee. 7:15, we have a public hearing with MIAA for the 2014 High School Super Bowls at Gillette Stadium. 7:30, we have a public hearing regarding moving a poll. 7:40, we have showcase cinema deluxe liquor conditions on VIP section. Kicking Cow Productions actually has been canceled. 7:50, we will be discussing the special town meeting warrant articles with the board, the planning board, Randy Scollins and Bill Keegan and Dave Feldman regarding the town hall project. 8:10, we'll have citizens input. 8:15, Town Hall Working Group. David Feldman will provide us with an update. And at 8:25, Bill Keegan will provide us with the town manager update. John, can you just send the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, our first item is the report, the annual report of the Child Sexual Abuse Awareness Committee. Would you like to come forward to the table?
Hi.
Good evening. Can you just provide your names for the record, please?
Linda Walsh, A. Pondav.
Bob Korea. I'm just a member at large.
Okay.
A large member.
Before we get started, can I, I just kind of prep the board a little bit on why they're
here and then turn it back to them. So, there's two things on our agenda tonight. One, we just came out of executive session and that was at 6:30, and that was discussion strategies, legal concerns on the sexual abuse case. And then this one is the annual report of the Child Sexual Abuse Awareness Committee. So, somewhat related, but two different topics. So, under executive session, we have the ability to go in and talk about street strategies and legal issues. Just so you know what that issue was, because a letter was received from Attorney Garabedian that they're representing individuals from Foxborough during the eight era of William Sheen. We thought it would be wise to go in and talk about strategies. And the issue that we were talking about is, last meeting, we had made a request, the board discussed it briefly, to put it on this agenda at 6:30 because simply we want to formally ask the police department to write a formal report of everything that happened from once they were aware of the situation back in the eighties till now. Okay? So, that's what we were talking about. So, that's the legal, if you want to call it criminal investigation side. Now, you guys are here for tonight and we have one new board member, but just to go back a little bit, back in November of 2013, the Board of Selectmen appointed a committee of seven people. And at the time, we called it the Foxborough Child Safety Committee, right? And it was seven individuals and two of them here tonight. And basically, we were looking for a committee to come together to provide a code of conduct, training on sexual abuse, how to be aware of it, provide some protocols for reporting it if somebody sees it and who they're reported to, provide a yearly curriculum of dispensing material and educational throughout the community, and then at the end of the year, come back to the Selectmen and provide a report of what you've been doing for the year. And then also, as important, what we would expect the following year. So, that was November of 2013. So, between November and May, you guys were working very hard. And then we sponsored a warrant article to bring it in front of town meeting. And the reason that we wanted to put it on the warrant is to put it in our bylaws that said this committee supersedes any of the Selectmen that are here, the town votes it in, and it's permanent. And it kind of gives credence to the fact that you'll keep coming back. So, the people that we appointed back in November, there were seven volunteers, and I think it's important just to recognize them because they were somewhat handpicked from the people that we know are committed to the town, that work in the town, either in the private sector or around the youths. Youths?
The two youths.
The youths.
The two youths.
So, these are people that we kind of thought had the stamina and the energy to go forward. So, from the, and these seven people represented seven sectors out in the community that we thought was important to outreach to. So, probably the biggest one is the Foxborough Public Schools. So, Superintendent Debbie Spinelli volunteered to be on the committee and was appointed. From the Board of Recreation, Jeff Downs was also here tonight, is an actual member of the Recreation Board. From Public Safety, we have Detective Tim O'Leary, who at the, he's a detective now, but I think at the time, he was a youth officer for the Foxborough Police Department. We wanted to reach out to the religious institutions in town, so Reverend Bill Dudley volunteered. Council of Aging and Human Resources, Vicki Lowe stepped up to kind of represent the public side, the human resource, the-
Social services.
Social services. I keep saying social services. And she's been very, very helpful in that area. The private education on social institutions, former Selectman Linda Walsh, because of her involvement in setting this up, but also she's very involved with the J.C.'s, who does a lot of activities on town property and have a lot of outreach reaching the community. She was the seventh person. And I think I'd be remiss not to mention Mark Sullivan, who was a former Selectman and spent a lot of hours with the committee, with the police investigation, working to put all this together. So, that was from November to May, and then it was codified in May at the town meeting. And I think one of the important things to remember also is it used to be called the Child Safety Committee. And at some time along the line, the reason it was, when I put it together, I was hearing that people are a little uncomfortable about saying child sexual abuse. So, let's keep it cleaner, let's keep it, it'll get through the Attorney General a little bit easier and it'll, it'll kind of not raise the uncomfortableness. So, there was a motion made on the floor to say if we're going to do this, we're going to do it right. So, we called it the Child Sexual Prevent, I knew I was going to mess that up.
It's right in front of you, Jim.
Yeah. We call it the Child Sexual Abuse Awareness Committee. Now, you know, working with this committee a little bit, it's my understanding that child sexual abuse will happen, it'll continue to happen in any community, but it's the awareness and the education to stop it as early as we can. So, I think we're successful doing that. But I think what the committee's here tonight to do is to present kind of the formal report, let us know what you've been doing for the year and if there's any help that we can offer you from the, moving forward. So, a little long-winded, but I'll leave that up to Bob Korea, the chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. First of all, I'd like to thank the help we've had from Jim, Kevin, and Linda from the Selectmen's side over the year. And in beginning, we formed this committee as a result of two requests that came before the board from the survivors of Bill Sheen in that era. One of the things was asked at that time was for the board to look into the management side of the issue. The other was to set up a committee, which became ours, to look into spreading the awareness and educating people as to what it's all about. Through all the different trainings we've had, a lot of people have been woken up. And believe me, this isn't a fun thing, nobody wants to talk about it, but it's, it's there. It happened here, it's still happening here. I know a couple of trainings I just did recently, people came up afterwards and said, you know, my brothers or whatever, they had personal experiences. And it's amazing, it's just, I mean, in this committee, we had this one instance back a number of years, we had a clergyman also, and there's been many other situations. So anyways, this committee is set up to educate as many people as we can. We had three different initiatives. One was to train all town employees and make it a part of their training coming in. And we've advanced the request to the new HR lady. And it'll be part of the incoming training. Almost all town employees have been trained at this point. There's approximately 30 that haven't, and some of that was because they're out of various other reasons. But the school department, right away before we even had the rule, attacked their people and everybody from the superintendent down to janitors, bus drivers, everybody that got a check in the school department has been trained. Every new employee's trained, every part-time employee's trained. So, they've done a great job in taking the reins and making that happen. Through the lot of help from Sandra Herman up the town hall, we've gotten a lot of town employees and most all of town employees trained. Even Bill claims he finished today.
No, last week, actually.
Okay.
But I am done.
All right. And I also hope all you up there are also going to take part in training. It's online as well as the sessions we have. You'll be very surprised at the different figures and how they apply to our community. I mean, if you were to guess the projected numbers of people affected in the community, you would say, this doesn't happen here. But one in 10, that's our 300 kids right here. And that's under age 18. That's a lot. So, this isn't something that's just made up, something that's very important to be aware of and, you know, take seriously and also keep going. And that's why we made it part of the bylaws that we can't just disappear if somebody isn't interested because they have to, the group has to come before the Selectmen every year and make this report. So anyways, that was the first thing with the town employees. Second was to try to make it a requirement of anybody using town facilities to be trained. If they use facilities more than three times, they have to submit a list of, they have coaches or people in charge of the group and that signifies that they've been trained. That's one way we thought we could catch people, you know, kind of like have a gate that we could say, well, if you want to use it, this is it. It's town, and that's whether you're a town group or not. Most everybody uses the fields, not town control groups, baseball, all that. They're private things. They just use the field. So, we really have no governmental, you know, control of those people. So, we have a control of the property, so we can say, just like pickball papers, you have to be trained. We've had a couple of training sessions for all the coaches. It was very well-attended. I was very surprised and happy with the attendance and also the questions and the involvement and some, you know, you look at different crowds and you look at people and say, that person doesn't want to be here. But I was pleasantly surprised when some of the people I picked were the ones that spoke out and were really into it. And we found how many groups don't have code of conducts, don't have, having thought of half the stuff, not even to do with just the sexual aspect, just having the kids there, the liability and all that kind of thing. So, all the groups went away with some work to do, and we're going to continue working with them and that type of thing. So, away from that type of thing, it goes into everybody else in the town. We don't necessarily have control of them, but we can, you know, guide them and help them get the training done, any training. I mean, and that takes in churches, that takes in the J.C.'s, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, the three other private schools in town, and there's 1,000 kids involved in those. It goes on and on. There's so many different areas we could help, there's a whole list to take here, so yeah, we don't control any of them, but we can make the training available to them. So, that's kind of the direction we're going in for this next year. Linda and Bill Dudley are kind of heading that up. We have a little cleaning up to do on the first couple initiatives that we started this year, which will continue. Now, this isn't a one-shot thing. Every year, we're going to introduce some other training. Basic baseline training is Dr. Delight, put out by that group. It's backed by the YMCA, and that's something everybody has to do for this year. In other years, we may just have a handout. Along the way, there's other trainings we've come up with. There's so much things we could do to make it new and just keep it rolling so it is not, just peak people's, that's probably not phrasing, but get their, keep their interest up every year. Like I say, it's nothing that anybody wants to talk about, they can remain focused and these things happen. So, that's pretty much, I think, what we have planned. I don't know if there's anything else you'd like to add?
Well, just, the only thing I'd like to add is that the group's worked very hard, and thank you, Jim, and thanks for your support. Like to see everybody trained in this. And it's basically, it just makes you more comfortable in spotting something and reporting it. For so many years, people just, it's my imagination or whatever. But it's be on the safe side. We want everybody that even thinks about doing something to any of our children to think about not coming into this town, whether it's a big neon sign or whatever. And the more people we get trained, the better. So, as you mentioned, the coaches and the officials of the youth sports have taken it, and now we're on the road of everybody else. So, we're going to continue that way. And we also have a couple individuals that are going to step up to be trainers, so that we'll have our own trainers and we won't have to reach out to the YMCA every time. So, part of the budget that you gave us will be to train, what they call train the trainers. So, the more trainers that we have available, Deb has five now from the school, but if they're not available, we'll have others too. So, it's, it's snowballing and it's a great feeling, and I think that Foxborough is going to be a leader in the state of Massachusetts. Already, other towns are reaching out to you folks to find out how they can get involved with something like this. So, congrats to you guys for being the leaders once again.
Do you want to say?
Go ahead, say it. Say it.
Is, I've never been involved with a better group of individuals in the committee that are dedicated, they're focused, and they're here to work. They're not here to talk, they're not here to, you know, socialize. We have two meetings a month. We come in, get our business done and leave, and we've got a bunch of workers and not socialized.
I do bring cookies, though.
Well, we have to have cookies. One thing we went to, I think it was last fall, was a big regional type of conference, and it was all New England down to New Jersey, Pennsylvania. I don't know, let's just say there's 800 people there. We listened for hours, several hours. Everybody had all the facts and figures and all this stuff. And when I went away, I said, well, that's nice, but what are we doing with all this stuff? I mean, it's nice we have these charts and everything else, and these people have been out of here for years, but they know direction as to what you do. So, it was set up by round tables, and each 10 people or so were at a table. They went table by table, asked what each table had done. And so, some people said, well, we read this or that, and another one wanted to start social media, which I'm not sure what that does. And came to our table and Jim stood up and said basically the kind of things we were thinking of. And the rest of them actually stood up, clapped for us because we were the only ones that had any kind of stuff going forward. We weren't just going to make charts and stuff. We've got to get this done, this is urgency. So, right then, we knew we were in the right place, going in the right direction, so.
Now, one comment, one observation is that when you mention that this training is necessary to do business in Foxborough, that it's received by the adults in those groups as absolutely necessary. I don't think there's, from what you said, there doesn't seem to be any shirking away from the responsibility to train. And that's encouraging because I think everyone recognizes that it's, it's essential in, you know, the day we live in. So, thank you very much.
I get to say, one of the first trainings that we had, and I think Jeff Downs sent out emails to all the youth sports, and they were difficult times. It was a beautiful Saturday morning, and one was a Friday night. And who wants to sit and talk about this on a Saturday morning? And I know there was one coach in there that thought he was there because he was in trouble because he got in a fight with an umpire. People weren't sure what to expect. But by the end of that couple hour session, you know, I look at it in a different way as well. I learned a lot, that it is everywhere, but it also protects, if you're a coach, or you're a teacher, or you're somebody with kids, it's a way to protect you because it doesn't put you in situations where you have one player to one coach. There's always two coaches to one player. The things that, you know, the kind of common sense now, after the Boy Scout era and the Catholic Church era, you know, people start talking about it. But I was amazed at all the different groups that, and you had said, just don't have that protocol. And the dialogue, and we even had high school coaches come attend, and the dialogue was phenomenal. So, it's head and shoulders where we were a year ago. And the other thing that, and you mentioned that meeting, at our roundtable, we had Chief O'Leary, we had a police chief, we had Deb, the superintendent, Deb Giadino, the rec department director. We had all the leaders in the town that were there because it was important to the town. And it, you know, one year makes a huge difference.
And not all of us knew that each other were going until, you know, it wasn't like we called each other and planned it, it was, you know. So, people take CPR training, and they need to take this awareness training just as seriously as you take CPR training.
Well, I'll tell you, I took the training as a coach, but at the end of the training session, and as I was leaving, I was so happy I took the training as a parent. And I think we can advance this if we can put the link to the training, either on the school website, or the town website, or both. Because the training is invaluable for parents. Because they're the ones that are bringing their kids to the, to the practices and the games, and they can see some of the warning signs. And they can see the warning signs from the children at home. So, I, you know-
That's why we're now at the point that we're reaching out to other organizations, getting the parents involved, everyone else. This is going to be open to everyone, the next couple trainings that will be coming up in November, so that we can get to them. I know it's great to say, well, I took it online, and you can skip some things, but if you skip through some of that video that you were made to watch, you might lose some of that. And you understand what I'm saying.
Right.
Because you saw it.
Right. But at least it's something.
Right, it is something, yep.
It's, it's two steps ahead of where, where the average parent is now without taking any sort of training. And I think that's invaluable.
Yep.
So, thank you.
I just wanted to mention, I'm an employee of the Y, so I have taken the training for quite some time, and it's just amazing what people don't know. And until you see something like that and how it's put together, it's just, I think your approach to get that out to the parents and, you know, further out into the community is really terrific because it's, it's just so important for people to learn as much as possible. And I just want to comment on your report, you know, I'm looking forward to next year's report. You've accomplished so much in just this one year. Congratulations to all of you, really.
You have a great team, so.
I don't want to keep going on, but I, there's one thing I do want to mention. When we all started this, some of the meetings that we had, things like mandated reporter, what do you do, who do you call, who's a mandated reporter? I just want to, just a quick shout out to Deb Spinella, the superintendent, where most of our youth obviously goes through the school system. That is one system that's run over there that has the checks and balances, the training. So, you know, it was a good, it was a good example of one department helping the other department and kind of raising everybody else up. But I was amazed at the level of awareness that the school has with other teachers and training, and I think we've all learned from that. So, thank you to the school system for doing that.
All right, well, thank you very much. We really appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Okay, it being 7:15, we have a public hearing scheduled for the MIAA 2014 High School Super Bowls at Gillette Stadium. Jenny, can you read the notice, please?
The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 140, Section 181 and Section 183A in Chapter 136, Section 4, Town of Foxborough Revised Bylaws, Article 5, Section 6, and also Stadium Rules and Regulations, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, October 21st, 2014, beginning at 7:15 PM in the Foxborough High School Media Center, 120 South Street, to review the applications submitted by NPS LLC for the 2014 MIAA High School Super Bowls. All events are proposed for Gillette Stadium. All applications for these events are on file at the Office of the Selectmen. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Thank you. Good evening. Can we have your names, please, for the record?
Jess Stevenson at Gillette Stadium.
Mike Asherburn, Vice Chair, Stadium Advisory Committee.
Welcome. So Jess, would you like to provide us an overview, please?
Absolutely. So, we're coming before you this evening with the application for the 2014 MIAA High School Super Bowls. This is the eighth year that we have hosted this event at the stadium. It's the six divisional statewide championships like it has been in the past. The first game starts at 9:00 and the last, 9:00 AM, and the last game starts at 8:00 PM. In the interim, we host six games. There's a 20-minute downtime in between each game built in for any necessary injury timeouts. But overall, the day tends to run very smoothly. Our parking lots will open at 8:00, and the gates will open at 8:00 as well. Tickets for the event are available at our box office and they're also available on Ticketmaster. For this event, in the past, we typically have between 18,000 and 19,000 people throughout the course of the day that come, but it's a pretty steady flow. So, at no point is there more than about 3,000 fans in the stadium for any given game. We've made the transition two years ago into keeping it all onto the east side of the stadium to sort of help with operations and costs. So, all of the spectators are on the east side of the stadium. It's been an easy transition. We haven't had any behavioral issues. We do keep some sort of delineation between the two sides so that each school can sort of sit with their own fans, sit with their families, cheer together, and we don't have any issues with sort of rivalries or any behavioral problems. So, that's been easy enough on our end, and it's worked out very well for the MIA as well. So, we're going to continue to host just the lower bowl of the stadium on the east side only. And so, I think there aren't any significant changes at all this year. We're going to continue to host the Sportsmanship Summit with the MIA, and then we host an operational walkthrough meeting on the Friday prior to this event, so everybody has an understanding for the operations lay of the facility. We will have the student busing in place that we had in previous years where they come in through P1, pull up to the field house, and the teams are allowed to warm up in the field house with their coaching staff so that the transition from field house onto the field is seamless and quick in order to keep everything rolling and make sure that we start that final game right at 8:00. So, I think that's it. Did I miss anything, Mike?
No problems.
So, Stadium Advisory Committee is all set with approval?
All right, this has been reviewed by all the committee members and the fire chief and the voice chief.
Any questions from the board?
It's about as straightforward as it comes. I don't have any questions.
Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move that we close the public hearing for the MIAA High School Super Bowl Games at Gillette Stadium.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Is it, nobody from the audience? Because it's a public hearing?
Oh, sorry. Any input from the public? Okay. All those in favor? All right. Okay. All right. So, can I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the application by NPS LLC for the MIAA High School Super Bowl Games at Gillette Stadium on December 6th, 2014.
A second motion.
Any discussions? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a discussion about moving a pole on Ridge Road. Okay, so there was a public hearing this afternoon at 3:30. There were no objections at that public hearing, per Sandra Herman, who was present, and so what we have to do tonight is just vote on approving the movement of this, oh, this electrical pole to the other side of the road.
Again, just for the record, this is a pole that exists, it's a shared pole between National Grid and Verizon, and the topic simply is to move that pole from one side of the street to the other.
And also, letters to the butters had been sent out from the town hall previous, inviting people to the hearing.
This afternoon, the town engineer and the representative from National Grid was, were present at the, along with Sandra Herman and myself, I did stop by for a few minutes, and there were no, there was no public attendees.
All right. So, can we have a motion, please?
I move that we approve the request by Mass. Electric Company and Verizon New England Incorporated to move the pole at 10, number 10 Ridge Road, from one side of the road to the other.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so, we're a little ahead of schedule here. Do you want to go to citizens' input? Any citizens' input? No? Okay. How about some action items?
Sure. The first action item is the renewal of a Hackney license for Maurice Bakachi, and this is a renewal, and it would expire on October 28th, 2016. This has been okay, oh, excuse me, this has been okay by Chief O'Leary.
Was that a motion? Then I'll second it.
I didn't make the motion yet, I'm just explaining what it was. So, you want the motion, though?
Yes, please.
Okay. I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the renewal of a Hackney license for Maurice Bakachi, expiring on October 28th, 2016.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
The next item is a gift acceptance to the Recreation Department. I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the acceptance of a donation of $25 from Susan Collins to the Recreation Committee for the Skate Park Rehab Project, and thank her for the donation.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And the last item is approval of the minutes for October 7th, 2014. I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the minutes of the October 7th, 2014 Board of Selectmen Meeting as written or as amended.
Second.
Any corrections, changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Very nice. A lot of pages.
That's it?
Chopped up. Moving at light speed here.
Anything in the information package?
Let's see, Xfinity 3D is no longer available. There's a letter from State Rep. Jay Barrows to the Mass. DOT regarding the commuter rail station, which Bill had commented on to us at our last meeting, and you'll see that he's addressed this letter to Dave Mulder, Chief Transportation Planner at Mass. DOT, expressing his concern that there was a recent decision to put the Foxborough Community Rail Service Station into full-time use, and that while he strongly supports economic development, he expressed his disappointment in the lack of transparency and communication from the MBTA on this project, so is requesting further insight into the decision-making process on this matter. So, I appreciate that letter. Jay?
Now, since it's under information, is there something being scheduled? We had talked about it at the last meeting, to be on an agenda.
Yes, we, I've had one conversation, which was on the, which was last week, hoping that I would have something for you tonight, but they're still setting up a meeting between the state representative and the state senator, and that was, originally was scheduled for earlier today, but there was, they had to postpone the meeting, for whatever reason, I'm not really, it's not really sure, let me ask the why, but they had to postpone it, so they're going to reschedule it, and they will not schedule a meeting with the board until that meeting is complete, so until we hear from that completion of that meeting, we won't get a date.
The MBTA won't schedule a meeting?
Right. They want to move that in that process. That's pretty normal, actually, that they would advise that direction first. So, we will hear from them. I've made it clear to them that we're anxious to have information about this. We're getting phone calls and inquiries about the issue, and we're not in a position to really comment further until we have that information.
Bill, there's also a local meeting that's going to be held?
Yes.
At Patriot Place?
One of the, I received the notification this week about a meeting that was going to be held this week, actually, coming up on, there is a meeting scheduled, I believe it was November 19th, at the Patriot Place, I put on by MAPC, to talk about rail transportation to the region. I don't know that it's specifically aligned with this particular project, but I'm sure that will be come up as a topic of discussion. So, there is this more of a regional perspective on additional rail service to this region.
Yeah, it's already been held during the day, so...
Yeah, 8:30 in the morning, or 8:00 till 11:30, something like that, yeah.
So, that is coming up. Here, I'm sorry. It was just to save the date, starting at 8:00 AM to 11:30 AM, and it's scheduled for a Patriot Place, so it's strictly a save the date notification at this point in time.
Give me the date again, Bill.
November 19th.
19th.
And sponsored by the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, the Three Rivers Inter Local Council, the Ponson Valley Transportation Management Association, Ponson Valley Chamber of Commerce, and 495 Metro West Partnership. And it says, the title of it is "Bridging Transportation Gaps Into the Ponson Valley." So, therefore, it's not limited to just rail, it's talking about other transportation issues as well.
Bill, when we do get to schedule the board meeting with Mass. DOT, the Walpole Board of Selectmen would also like to be invited.
I have maintained contact with the acting town manager, or town administrator in Walpole just the other day. He reached out to me, and I spoke to him briefly, and said that we still haven't received any notification, and once we do, that we would notify them.
What about the town in Norfolk? They would be affected also?
I've not had any conversation with them yet, from Norfolk. Until we have specifics, I'm sort of hesitant to notify, but to put the blanket, notice And I think it would be appropriate that they wouldn't want to have meetings with those individual communities as well.
Yeah.
Are we waiting till 8:50?
7:50.
7:50, sorry.
8:50, you're waiting by yourself.
The glare on the clock up there. Want to take a slide recess? Can we do that?
Sure. Frank, can we take a recess, please?
Larry, could you grab Frank?
Welcome back to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, October 21st. Being 7:50, we have as our next agenda item, discussion of the special town meeting warrant articles. We'll start off with the planning board articles. Sharon's here, and we also have the signed bylaw.
Thank you, Ms. Brew. I distributed a memo explaining the three planning board articles. They're relatively, we believe, not controversial. They're housekeeping items. The first article, Article 5, changes the definition of accessory apartment. It currently defines it as a separate dwelling unit pursuant to Section 8.1 of the zoning bylaws, which are only the accessory apartments, which require a special permit from the planning board. You can also have an accessory apartment where you get just a building permit from the building inspector. So, we changed the definition to reflect both the special permit accessory apartments and the building permit, building accessory apartments. And we also addressed two issues we've had in the past couple of years, that accessory apartments may only be in detached, single-family homes, not attached, single-family homes, and that the house must be in existence at the time of the application. So, we incorporated all that information into the new definition. We worked very closely with Mr. Caspera to make sure that it addressed any of his concerns. And as I said, I don't think that, we haven't changed the size of an accessory apartment, we haven't changed the requirement that it's for a family member of the owner of the home. Those things remain intact. All we've changed is the definition to reflect more globally what an accessory apartment is.
Any questions for Sharon?
So, it's basically just items 1 and 2. Those are the only changes. That they be detached, and the home had to be in existence at the time of the application.
And that they're both special permit and building permit. So, those are the three major changes. As I noted in my memo, at the close of the planning board's public hearing on October 9th, the board voted unanimously to recommend adoption to the town meeting.
During that public process, was there a lot of public input, that people were interested in this at all?
I believe Ms. Coppola was the only person in attendance, and she was fairly quiet that evening.
Okay.
I had no problem with this.
Now, procedurally, now that the warrant is closed, this would have to be changed on town meeting floor.
It would need to be if someone chose to amend it.
Okay. Are you gonna choose to amend it?
No, the existing, the definition that we've proposed, an accessory apartment, a separate dwelling unit not exceeding 850 square feet in area within an existing detached, single-family residence for a family member of the homeowner.
Okay, so that's currently how the language reads?
No, that's what we're proposing.
Okay, all right.
It currently reads, "A second dwelling unit in a single-family dwelling authorized pursuant to Section 8.1 of these bylaws." So, the 8.1 only dealt with the special permit accessory apartments, not the Bill Caspera accessory apartments.
You're asking if it's an amendment on the floor, because you think this is different than what was approved?
Right, that's what I'm asking.
I think this is just a summary. This isn't changed from what we have approved.
No, no. The new definition in the memo is exactly what's on the warrant.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, all set.
Ma'am Chair, are you gonna take positions, is the board gonna take a position on each of these articles at this point? Is that your desire to do that tonight?
Do you want to go through these first, and then we can do that?
I don't know that the Board of Selectmen have taken positions since I've been here. Yeah, okay. On zoning? We welcome your support.
We are now.
We welcome your support.
Okay, Article 6?
Article 6 would attach the plan of the Foxborough Center Overlay District, FCod, prepared by MAPC as Appendix C of the zoning bylaw. Sandra may have told you the difficulty in incorporating graphics in the warrant, and that was not included last spring. We wanted to make sure that people knew exactly where the overlay district is, and very clearly whether or not their property was in or out of it. So, we chose to amend the zoning by attaching that map. Again, at their hearing on October the 9th, the board recommended unanimously to recommend the town meeting adopt this amendment. Article 7 changes the definition of height of building. And I provided on the back of the memo, a graphic that I found in a historical report of the American Planning Association, one of their tongue-in-cheek reports, showing how to determine the height of the building. That's consistent with our existing definition, that if the full walkout basement, you count the basement and halfway up the gable roof. If it's not a walkout basement, you count the first floor to the halfway up the gabled roof. So, that two homes from the street that look identical, the one that has the walkout basement to the rear, is technically taller than the other one under zoning. What we're proposing to change the definition to is the second drawing, the mean grade around the building, and there's a slight slope to this house. It's a little deeper in the back than the front, and it goes up to the peak of the gable. This is the definition in the state building code. This change was requested by Mr. Caspera, and he is very comfortable with the definition in the warrant and in my memo. And again, as noted before, at a public hearing on October the 9th, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend adoption to town meeting.
Any questions from the board?
That's from the midpoint?
Yeah, the midpoint of the basement.
Of the depth?
Yeah. I drove around, the majority houses in town are fairly flat, but if you're higher on one side than the other, it's the midpoint between the two, to the peak of the roof, not including spires, cupolas, elevator headhouses, water tanks, chimneys, ventilators, pipes, and similar apparatus. Madam Chairman, having attended planning board meetings, where all three warrant articles were very well explained to the audience, and also the advisory committee, they asked some very good questions, and they really, they got very good answers, very complete, and easily understood answers from the planning board and all their questions. So, it's been very, all three warrant articles have been vetted, I believe, very well.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right. The next item is the signed bylaw. We met last week with the advisor committee?
We met last week, and received yet more comments from local business people. Again, the Board Advisory Committee is... Again, the billboard Advisory Committee is very thankful for the financial support from the Board of Selectmen that enabled us to hire the consultant to do the bulk of the redrafting. We came up with, as is in existence, a non-zoning sign by law. We tried very hard to be fair to everyone. We tried not to be too punitive. We sought to encourage creative signs and to try to deal with the dichotomy of what is a small New England town with a major NFL stadium on the other side of it, and come up with a signed by law that worked for both Foxborough Center and Route One. We think we succeeded. We had robust input and attendance from residents and the business community. I would have been overjoyed to have that kind of participation in the master plan. I think we had very good participation from lots and lots of folks. We heard a lot of opinions. It's a compromised document, but I think it's much better than what we have now.
Yeah, really, the group worked to make it as level of a playing field as possible for all the business people who would be affected. And really, right up until just a couple of weeks ago, we're still making changes with input from business people in the community.
And the AdCom.
And the Advisory Committee also. They had some really good comments.
Really good comments.
You know, the plan is, in the springtime, to come forward with a separate...
Potentially, a separate electronic billboard article.
Article, right.
Upon advice of AdCom, we removed the electronic billboard portion of the bylaw to get more public comment on that section.
And then, you know, as we get, as we head in that direction, I think, you know, just again, continued discussion with Advisory Committee. You know, they had some, also some good ideas the other evening, so, you know, we said this will be a living document. We'll continue to work on this and get more input as we head towards the spring meeting.
I agree, so. I know most of you, I believe all of you, were at the AdCom meeting in early September where we spent over two hours walking through every section of the bylaw. And I don't know if you have any more specific questions at this point in time. But I didn't want to burden you with a repeat of that presentation.
You didn't want to summarize the bylaw?
Twenty-eight pages and fifty words or less. I need your kind of talent, David, to do something like that.
Sharon, you said it was, compromise is the right word, if that's what you said, where you're hearing input from all different sides and kind of compromising to come up with something. Should this go forward?
Maybe collaborating.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At town meeting, if someone had to stand up, what's, what anxiety is out there that people would have a problem with this? Whether it be businesses or residents, is there anything that you couldn't come to an agreement with that you're hearing from the businesses or community?
I think there's a major landowner that still has some reservations. They are not residents of town.
And this isn't a loaded question. I don't know what was left over, but it's always, when there's twenty odd pages of, you know, sometimes it gets, you try to please everybody, but I don't know if you just, you nailed it with everybody if there's still outstanding issues, that's all I'm saying.
I'm sure there will be, but I think that we tried to provide ways that people could get larger signs if they felt they needed it. We tried to provide a process without overburdening the Board of Appeals. One of the consultants suggested, suggestions were all signed amendments, went through the Board of Appeals, and there's hundreds of those a year. And we said, no, we have to just take the most critical ones. But, you know, replacing a four-square-foot sign when you change the name of your tax company shouldn't require a Board of Appeals action. So we really wanted to make it as streamlined and as business-friendly as possible. But we really sought to protect the residents and the overall appearance of the town. We found through the master plan that people think it's a really nice town. There are parts of the town that they think are particularly attractive. And the Planning Board and the billboard Advisory Committee agree, and we felt that large neon signs were not appropriate in those parts of town. By the same token, we recognize that Route One is, is our town's economic engine, and we had to have signs that enabled those businesses to reach out to people in ways that were maybe not appropriate in other parts of town. So we came up with three sign districts. The Route One corridor and the large signs that are allowed in that neighborhood are on lots which only have frontage on Route One and lots connected to them, which are not zoned residential. So land continuously owned by the Kraft Group. Once it gets back towards Ashcroft Road or Cross Street and is zoned residential, they can't put the large signs up back there, nor would I think they'd want to, but I'm not a businessperson. I don't know how those things work. That's the least restrictive district. The most restrictive district is around the center of town, including the historic district and a number of the historic buildings that people in town care so much about. And the rest of the town is kind of in the middle. We thought it was the three bears approach, mama bear, papa bear, and baby bear. So, and one of the things that we allow on Route One is for very large developments. They can have larger signs. And we thought that that might be something we would look into in the rest of town. Foxborough Plaza, Foxfield Plaza, and Vences, some of the businesses which are very large might need a slightly larger sign. And we might want to provide a similar mechanism within the Zone Two. And that's also on our list of things to explore for a future town meeting, be it spring or another special. But there's a number of issues, and as we start to use the bylaw, should it be adopted by town meeting, I'm sure we'll discover other things that we want to refine, as we saw tonight in our zoning. Changing definitions, making them more easily understood and more friendly. If I lived in a home and I was trying to figure out how tall it was, I'd certainly prefer Option B to Option A.
Just one last question. As a planner, from your experience, does it surprise you it came out to be twenty-eight pages? I've worked in towns where there's two or three pages and it's fine.
No, it really doesn't.
You think someone, as a business owner coming in, they can navigate through it and understand it being that lengthy?
Six pages are definitions, which help to explain a lot of what you can and can't do. And then, a number of sections only apply to one area. But the bulk of, if you look at the administrative section in your sign district, it's under eight or nine pages.
Wants to figure out where you are.
Right, right. One of our, one of the Planning Board's wish list projects is a guide for businesses. You know, who do you go to see to get what done? And we would anticipate that you could perhaps have a similar guide for signs. You know, make it really easy, a one-pager.
I know in a lot of communities, you know, because of the company I work with, we have, we have lots of signs. In most communities, any signage is, requires a special permit. And with the special permit, you have to go through the Planning Board and Design Review Board before you can even apply for a building permit. So, yeah, in those communities, the sign by law might be a couple of pages, three pages, four pages. But the process to get the signage approved is, does tend to be cumbersome. So, you know, one of my concerns would be if somebody does want a larger sign than what's approvable by right, is that process going to be cumbersome?
That was the last change we made, and you can go to the Board of Appeals and make your case why you need a larger sign. Originally, the Board of Appeals process was required for billboards, water tower signs, and a handful of other very large, very prominent signs. And we've expanded it to enable people that feel they have a case based on something unique to their property or their business, that they need something that we didn't anticipate. They'll have an avenue to go to the Board of Appeals and make the case and see how they'd get. This is not a zoning by law. This is a general by law of the town. So that makes it a little bit easier in terms of grandfathering and pre-existing non-conforming and that sort of thing. And that, too, is why there's a lot of definitions.
Good, thank you.
And just a reminder for people who will be attending town meeting, it is twenty-eight pages, and when you first look at it, it is, it really is a lot to take in. But remember, it's, this was written with input in the, with the, the sign by law committee from, from everybody, but also the AdCom has really looked at this and really asked some very good questions. So whatever question you have when you're sitting at town meeting, I can guarantee you, the Advisory Committee or some other entity has already asked that question and has gotten an answer. So I think it is twenty-eight pages, but it's really been vetted very, very well.
And people are, could certainly call me, and I'll be glad to walk them through what the, what's, or Bill Caspera. The committee was myself, Lorraine, Bill Caspera, Bill Greeter, Barney Overett, and Randy Scollins. So we had a lot of people who came at the sign issue from different points of view. We spent a lot of time. We had fourteen meetings, I believe, fourteen long meetings.
A lot of input from the businesses.
And, and we had a lot of residents as well.
We couldn't keep Larry away.
Oh, no.
Awake or away?
Any other questions? Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you. I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Randy, would you like to go over the financials for Article One, please?
Evening. This is probably the most straightforward article that you have on the warrant. In essence, what it does is it puts into effect what the Board negotiated with the Kraft Organization with regards to the liquor license agreement that you had. So as a result of that agreement, they have paid to the town mitigation amount to cover the costs of an additional police officer for the town. The amounts that we arrived at were derived by Chief O'Leary and myself and reviewed with the Kraft attorneys and was agreed upon. And I have to give them credit, they actually sent the check in fairly early in the fiscal year for the entire year. But given that we, you know, we need to go to town meeting to appropriate the funds, it hasn't been spent. We determined that the, the total cost for this year wouldn't exceed the amounts that you see in the article, seventy-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars. So we actually kind of checked back to the crafts of fifty-four thousand and fifty dollars, you know, in fairness, because this is supposed to cover the, the actual cost of a police officer. And then, as you know, this is refunded to the town every year. But this is the amount that we need for this year. And the article places the dollars in each of the five expense categories needed to fund the officer.
Questions for Randy?
So Randy, following this year, once the town, if the town meeting votes this in on Article One, where does this show up the following year? Is this just within the police budget? These, you know, the salaries, expenses, retirement, insurance, how is that tracked?
The, when the chief hires the next officer, the chief and I will track, you know, what the expenses are associated with that officer, and those will be the expenses that ultimately, you know, we will share with the Kraft Organization, review with them. And they've agreed to kind of check annually to the town for that. So it's a local receipt, so it's mixed in with all the other, you know, five dozen line items that are in local receipts. So we're appropriating this from local receipts, but we will be tracking these expenses.
Okay, so it'll always be an item associated with the police.
Right, but it'll be part of their budget.
Yep.
And the other budgets, pension, health insurance, et cetera. But the, the funding will come in via local receipts, a check that we'll receive, and it can be appropriated like any other local receipts.
Okay, so annually, you're gonna go through with the Kraft Organization to determine the cost of that officer?
We won't have another, we won't have another warrant article.
No, we will not.
Yeah, these, these line items will be reviewed. I'm sure the, the numbers will change.
No, I, my point is that I think the question, if I understood Jim's question, was that it'll be clearly identified where that money's coming from in the local receipts line.
Correct, yeah, in the annual budget, local receipts, off the warrant article, because it's already been addressed.
Yes, we've, we've actually set up a, a new account, you know, account code to, to track that particular revenue coming in, just like we do with the mitigation.
Thank you.
Yeah, Bill, my question, well, these are not fixed numbers through time. They'll, they'll change with, you know, differing rates.
Exactly.
Any other questions? Thanks, Randy.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Bill and David, the town hall project?
Well, I think we've, we've given a lot of information about this particular project. Just to give you an update on where we are, we are, this, well, let me just summarize that, that the article at town meeting is being, is requesting funding to pay for the architectural and overall project manager expense for the, for the building of a, of a new town hall. And that is based on a recommendation that's come out of the working group that's been placed before this board, as well as the, the AdCom, and is identified as such in the warrant. We are, we have, we've come to the, the point in the process at this point where we, we are trying to get a handle on the exact cost of the architectural and open, and overall project manager cost. We have, we interviewed four finalists for the architect yesterday. We are now in the process of identifying the, the final cost for that, that proposal. And then secondarily, we received eleven overall project management, manager proposals today. And we'll be going through that, that list to get that ready for, for next week as well. So by next Tuesday, where the Board will, will, I will have something for the Board and to also to provide for the AdCom as well, information pertaining to the exact cost of what we're, what we're looking to do. So those are the numbers that will be presented to ultimately the town meeting and the motion for, for consideration at town meeting.
I think it's important to note that two members of the working group actually participated in those negotiations and actually played a pretty significant role.
That's right.
So.
Yeah, we had, it was, it was a great interview process. We, we had four stellar candidates, I thought. So it was really good to see, you know, that level of, of consideration. I think we're catching some, some, some of these, these architects had, had good times where they were, they were looking for work, and so they really caught them in a good time, project consideration time. So, so we had some really, we had a difficult decision yesterday, actually, to, to go forward on, which was, which is a good, good problem, good problem to have. So I thought it was, it was a good process. So we will make a, we will be prepared to make a recommendation to you next week. I believe we'll have Mr. Euchner in as well to talk about what we, how we arrived at that process, that conclusion.
Thank you. So, does the Board want to vote positions on these articles this evening? Do you want to go forward one by one, make a decision that way?
It's your call.
Alright. Why don't we go through, and if there's anything that we want to hold on till next week, we can do that. Okay, so Article One. Can I have a motion to, actually? Yeah, a motion to vote to support Article One.
Just in the clarification, we've already supported all of these.
To be on the warrant. This is like our position on it.
But it's not just, it's either in favor of it or against it.
Yeah, right.
But all of us have supported it to move forward, regardless if we're against it.
Right. Right.
That we, that was sort of blending, to say that we had a, in order to move it forward, we supported the article in concept.
Place on the warrant.
Yeah, I'm saying, so, we're saying, when you're saying we're supporting it, it's to move forward, we've already supported it regardless if we...
We've supported it to be on the warrant, but not necessarily in favor of, we could vote against it.
Individually be against something, but think it needs to be voted on.
So, that's what I want to do tonight, is establish our position, so. Anyone want to attempt that motion?
I move that the Board of Selectmen support Article One, the town meeting on November 17th.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All those in favor of Article One? Article Two is to vote to transfer from available funds $600,000 for the construction of modular building and appurtenances to house the Foxborough Department of Public Works administration staff at 70 Elm Street.
I move the Board of Selectmen support Article Two.
All those in favor?
I'll second that.
I'm sorry?
Yep.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Article Three is to see if the town will vote to transfer an amount from available funds to pay the cost of hiring an architect and/or engineers, consultants for the purpose of preparing design plans and specifications to include contract bid documents and estimates for the site work demolition and construction at the town hall. Does the board want to vote on this or wait till we get more definite numbers?
I would suggest waiting till next week.
Okay. Okay. Go to Article Four. Article Four is to see if the town will vote to amend the Foxborough general bylaws by deleting its, in its entirety, Section 15B sign and replacing it with the following signed by law.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve Article Four of the town warrant.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Article Five, to see if the town will vote to amend Section 11.1 of the zoning bylaws by deleting the existing definition of accessory apartment and inserting the new definition.
I move the Board of Selectmen support Article Five, the warrant.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Article Six is to see if the town will vote to amend Section 2.2 of the zoning bylaws by adding the Foxborough Center overlay district, FCOD, and attaching the plan for that, for the FCOD.
I move that the Board of Selectmen support Article Six of the town warrant.
I'll second that.
All, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to amend Section 11.1 of the zoning bylaws, deleting the existing definition of height building and replacing with a new definition.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve, to support Article Seven of the town warrant.
And I'll second that.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So, we'll review item number three next week.
So, on Article Three, there's no number on Article Three, but you're going to go through the interview process for the OPM, which is probably a percentage of the construction cost, but then the architects' disqualifications, and then you're going to negotiate a price, all of this before next week, and that number will be brought in, input into Article Three?
It'll be an all-inclusive number for both, both those issues.
That's why I want to, I think we should, we should just wait.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's, that's a...
I just don't want to put it off a week and then, because everyone thinks the number's important, then it doesn't come in, and then we don't, then we vote on it without a number.
Our plan was to do that way. I mean, we're, we're on the crunch time to get this done, but we're going, we'll do this weekend to get it done.
That's a good move.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, on to the Town Hall Working Group. David?
We already gave the update.
You did that? Yeah, all right, so...
Other than, we are planning on October 30th to have a, a meeting that's open to the public. I think it's here?
It'll be held here in this room.
So, we'll do a slide presentation. We'll be open for, for questions, hopefully we'll...
Yeah, that's the public information session that you talked about a few weeks ago.
Right. So, hopefully we'll get some, some detailed questions, and we'll be able to give them some detailed answers.
Seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock in this room.
Thank you. Okay, and Bill, Town Manager update?
Just a, a couple of quick items. We already covered the MAPC seminar that was going to be on November 19th, so that was the, I wanted to make note of that. I certainly want to congratulate the fire department and, and the command staff, the chief and deputy chief, and several members of his command staff, too, who worked on the, on the firefighter award ceremony in the Memorial Mass, I thought, which was, which was great. Really, really well done. I appreciate the board's support as well, and that was, it was a nice day. It was, worked out really well for everybody. Everybody enjoyed it. Everybody, the fire department really supported it as well. I really appreciated the support as well, so just wanted to let you know that that was really well done. And I've already talked about the architects and how we've narrowed the field, and, and then, just a couple, and we did, again, identify 11 different proposals for OPM's overall project managers, which will be, will be working on the next few days. And then, and last but not least, I'll be speaking at the Mass Selectmen's Association meeting on Saturday morning at the Tri-County School in Franklin, speaking on the topic of, of former government and charter, charter reforms. So, okay.
And we get to listen to you.
Yeah, if you want to go, that's up to you.
What's the competing session?
Uh, the competing session is actually on...
Isn't it choosing a town manager?
No, that, that's the next one. It's actually the one dealing with health in the community or dealing with emergency preparedness or something like that, or something to do with paramedic service or something like that. I'm not 100% sure. But they thought that this topic would actually gain a little bit more, more coverage, so, so we'll see. Remains to be seen. So, that's all I have. Just wanted to, just let Mary Beth update you on another, a couple of things she's been working on, if you want to just take, take a second.
Sure. So, to assist with the town's initiative on the child sexual abuse awareness, I've embarked on taking the project and making sure that the remainder of employees receive the benefit of the training. So, right now, we're in the process of evaluating who's been trained, who hasn't. I've been in contact with YMCA and set up, we're throwing together some, throwing around some dates that might work and some looking at meeting locations. So, I think what we'd like to do is wrap it up, if we can, it's a little ambitious, but wrap it up in November, that all employees are trained. And I spoke with Tony, and we've set up some dates. We're just waiting on available rooms. And as I've been going around over the last couple of weeks, visiting with department heads and all of that, I've been also, you know, talking to them about making their staff, you know, time for their staff to do this, whether they do it online or at these trainings. And it's been an interesting couple of weeks. We've been engaged in collective bargaining and, you know, just getting around, getting to know the department heads and employees, and people have definitely been saving their personnel issues for my arrival, so...
It's a pretty big list.
No shortage of...
Some small issues, the big issues.
And, and just much appreciation to Randy for every time I need some historical background, he's there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Very good.
All right. I think we're all set? Motion to adjourn?
Given that it's exactly 8:30, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.